Good evening, thank you for coming to tonight's planning commission meeting. I will ask Commissioner Heschler to lead us all in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you Jay, can we have roll call please?
Chair Baldino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Keldorf.
Here.
Commissioner Heschler.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Wingate is absent.
Okay, now is the time for public communication, but this is for anything that's not already on the agenda. So I'll open public communication. Alright, seeing no one step forward, I'll close public communication. And we have one item on the consent calendar, anyone wish to pull that? It's a meeting minutes.
Nope.
Okay, well I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. No call items, that brings us to written communication, anything we haven't already seen in the packet? No. Alright, thank you. So that brings us to new business, H2, and this is an ordinance amending city's current prohibition on marijuana-related land use. Do we have a staff report? Thanks Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. I just have a brief summary of what we have in the staff report you received. A couple of years ago, as you mentioned, we, the city passed a moratorium on marijuana-related uses, but at the same time, it did amend the municipal codes to prohibit marijuana-related uses. That was done in the business regulations title of the code. And since then, staff has been doing some research on the topic and following events. And in the report we presented to you at the federal level, state level, and regional level, what the developments have been. At the federal level, marijuana is still considered illegal. And at the state level, there has been some activity in this year. Earlier in the year, one bill was adopted and enacted into law, dealing with better funding, better tracking of marijuana, illegal marijuana, and also giving the agencies that issue permits to do background checks as necessary on applicants. There is one bill that is pending, although it has an inactive status currently, that deals with the issue of delivery of marijuana. And that's a bill that staff will continue to track to see whether there's any activity there. And at the regional level, we surveyed cities in the area and found that most of the South Bay cities in our region have prohibited all marijuana-related uses. Some of the larger, more urbanized cities in the region outside of the South Bay have some limited legalization, city of LA is the example, and they've issued several, many licenses and permits. And that is sort of a quick summary of what's going on around us. As I mentioned, the city already prohibits marijuana activities, but staff and the city attorney's office thought that at this point it may be prudent to make some amendments to the zoning code, which also has some provisions related to marijuana. And specifically in chapter thirteen B, there's provisions prohibiting all marijuana-related uses, but it's titled medical cannabis, because it was drafted when medical marijuana was first legalized. So we think that it would be good to make some amendments at this point to kind of, let's say, foolproof the current prohibition on all marijuana-related uses. And that's really a quick summary of what we have before you.
Alright, thank you Paul. I should have disclosed earlier that today I went to a business called Tyson Ranch. They're located in El Segundo on El Segundo Boulevard. I read in a, I guess, online magazine, the ES Observer, the El Segundo Observer, about it being open. So I stopped in to see what they're all about. I met Mr. Ed Calhoun, who was the general counsel, and he was nice enough to come here today. But from what I understand, and I'm sure you can explain further, is that they are an accessory business of marketing and branding and things like that, that is not directly involved with having a marijuana license or selling marijuana or manufacturing marijuana. And so my concern is, how can we make sure this thing we're gonna pass is not so overbroad as to prohibit businesses that are related to this industry, but are not in the business of buying and selling marijuana? I totally get and agree that no one wants a pot store on Main Street, but I also think there are several other collateral industries, banking, branding, marketing, that may be related to that industry. And when you say things like marijuana accessory includes packaging, is that designing of packaging? Is that, you know? So, those are kind of my concerns. I'm concerned about the unintended consequence or any overreaching of what is a good idea into having negative effects on our economy and businesses that are already in town. So I don't know, Mr. King, if you've given that any thought?
Yes, actually, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This issue's actually come up before. And it's our office's opinion that the current code, in addition to the ordinance that's in front of you, would only be triggered if there was actual cannabis at the facility. So if there, it's just a business that advertises marijuana, designs packaging for marijuana, that would not be triggered by the ordinance and would not be prohibited in the city of El Segundo.
Okay, and the intent here is, we don't want you growing, manufacturing, processing.
That's right.
Selling marijuana.
That's right, all of those uses would require marijuana or cannabis to be in the jurisdiction of the city.
Alright.
So as long as those businesses do not have any cannabis at the facility, then they would not be prohibited by this ordinance.
Okay.
The packaging marijuana, selling marijuana would require cannabis at the facility, so that would be a different story.
Right, but I was thinking, you know, packaging, does that mean designing the package or deciding what the package looks like or even, you know? But I guess you're saying it's the intent of this statute that you can't physically handle marijuana.
That's exactly right.
Be it manufacture, process, sale, distribution. But if you're banking, if you're branding, if you're marketing, or leasing land, or whatever it is, I don't know.
Yeah.
That would not be prohibited.
That's exactly right. And all of these definitions are come from state law, this isn't something that the city of El Segundo's, it's unique. And also because the zoning code is a permissive ordinance, it's really only about what we're prohibiting. If it's not, if it's not something that we're prohibiting, it would not be triggered by this ordinance, so.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions for staff on this?
I have a, maybe a technical question, I don't know, the definition of cannabis, like creation in town sells CBD water?
Ah.
I don't know what, I don't know what the definition is. Does it have to have THC, is there some ratio? How does that work?
As far as the definition of cannabis?
Yeah, so that's on page twenty-four of your packet.
All parts of the plant. Whether grown or not, seed thereof, resin, crude, purified, extracted, any part of the plant, and every compound. So that would include CBD.
Right, whether it's for pets or for, as you say, in drinks, in smoothies.
Lotion.
Lotions.
Soap.
Handbags, you know. What do they call those?
Yeah, this definition is directly from state law.
So this eliminates all of that.
But we're regulating land use, right? I mean, just because we have a state law definition of what cannabis is, we can make a more exact definition. I mean, I think there's a specific retail-type establishment that we're trying to say, that's not what we want in El Segundo. But if you're putting CBD in your smoothie, I mean, who's gonna prohibit that? It's not like that's the thing that gets you high, right? That's just some.
Right, right. So let me see, let me look at the definitions.
Well, it's pretty, it's, you know.
It's anything.
It's super broad. Any part of the plant, every compound.
But it wouldn't be if you made t-shirts that had marijuana logos on them, or if you made packaging, you didn't package it, but you made it. How, yeah, I'm trying to think of all that, where that finally, where do we draw that line?
So as it's presented now, I think that inadvertently that is going to be prohibited. And I would recommend that we continue the public hearing, take the testimony from the public, and then consider direction at that point.
Gotcha. Any other questions before we open public communication? Okay, so now we'll open up public communication, I don't know if you'd like, come on, please.
I did have one more question, but I can wait until this gentleman's done. No, please, please, come on.
My name's Edward Calhoun, I'm general counsel for Tyson Holistic here in town. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you. I had just an opportunity this afternoon to read through the proposed ordinance, and I'd like to say generally, my company would absolutely support the intent of the land use to prohibit true cannabis activities in town. Absolutely no objection from us on that. I'm generally, I think the intent of the ordinance is there. I have one concern that I would like to share, and it's specifically with the definition of cannabis storage facility, which to my knowledge, I could be wrong, is not contained in the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Safety Regulation Act, or the MACURSA. So this is a new, it's a new definition, it's a new category of commercial activities that includes in particular storing cannabis X accessories. The definition of cannabis accessories is identical to that which is in the MACURSA, and it's very broad. As you were saying, it includes packaging, and it includes, if I may, I'll read from this, "Any equipment, products, or materials of any kind, which are used, intended for use, designed, or used in planting, or, excuse me, planting, propagation, cultivation, growing, harvesting, manufacturing, compounding, converting, producing, processing, preparing, testing, analyzing, packaging, repackaging, storing, smoking, vaporizing, or containing cannabis, or for ingesting, inhaling, or otherwise introducing cannabis or cannabis products to the human body." Very broad. So the way I read this is, any business who provides a product that meets that definition would be a cannabis storage facility and then prohibited under the use ordinance you're contemplating. And I'd make the observation that there are several things that fall into this definition that you want to have sold in the city. Particularly dirt is used for growing plants, light bulbs for just lights, they can be used for the lamps, cardboard, lighters, electrical equipment. These are just common things, and I don't make this in a joking way, I just mean to point out that this is exceptionally broad, and I think it would cover more than you're intending to cover under that definition. And my recommendation would be to eliminate the concept of a cannabis storage facility from the land use. The rest of the ordinance I didn't have any issues with. And if I may, if you'd like my input, I could address your question on the cannabidiol and the beverages. I believe this definition of cannabis is the same definition that's in the MACURSA, and it specifically excludes industrial hemp and its compounds. You can derive cannabidiol or CBD either from a marijuana plant or from an industrial hemp plant. And the source of that plant determines how it's regulated. And so if it's, you know, if it's coming from an industrial hemp plant, it wouldn't fit the definition of a cannabis product. There may be other California Department of Health issues, regulations that would govern sale of that type of product, but it wouldn't fall under a marijuana product.
Okay, and can you tell which is the source, how it's derived, if it's from the?
I'm sorry, yes.
The source of, can you tell, is there a way to know if the CBD in the water comes from?
To my, to my knowledge, there's not a way to scientifically test it in a blind study and say, aha, this came from a marijuana plant or a hemp plant. And the reason is, actually hemp, industrial hemp and marijuana are legal definitions, they're not scientific definitions. They're both categories imposed on different strains of a cannabis plant. And the primary criterion determining which is which is the level of THC in the plant. If the plant has by definition less than three tenths of one percent of THC in the dried weight tops, it's defined as industrial hemp.
I spoke with Mr. Calhoun for like ten minutes today and realized how little I understand about what we're about to regulate, so I'm happy you were able to come down today.
Absolutely, and again, I want to be very clear. We're absolutely on board with the idea of El Segundo having the community as it wants and not having commercial cannabis activities within the city.
So if a fashion designer makes jeans and bags and shirts out of hemp, does that, is that not marijuana in this?
Yeah, it's not, the definition says.
It's not marijuana.
Cannabis does not include mature stocks, plants, fiber of the stock, oil, seed of the plant, manufacturer, yada, 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 which is, does not mean industrial hemp as defined by the Health and Safety Code.
It's on page twenty-five.
Yeah, they're trying to focus on the marijuana, which I think everyone in this room agrees with, great. And the concern only is, you know, can we make sure that this is not overreaching and negatively impacting other businesses? You know, I didn't even think about the CBD thing, but people talk about that all the time.
And it appears that the activities that are primarily regulated in the ordinance, they're defined terms. A cannabis-related business is defined term, so it's not just the commonly understood thing of anything related to cannabis, it's a defined term here. But the cannabis storage facility, to my knowledge, isn't in the MACURSA, and that's very broad.
Okay, but besides that storage facility definition, you're comfortable with the rest of this not impacting your business?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Can you give us an idea of what you might be, what you might be doing to give us an actual example that would be what you do?
Absolutely. Tyson Holistic is a company primarily focused on entertainment, land development, and branding in the marijuana industry. So we are acquiring land and building facilities, not in El Segundo. We have brands.
Are you in office? Are you creative office space?
Yes.
That's all you are?
Yeah, I was there today, and it's just like a cool office with a sitting area and desks and computers.
We don't have any, we're not licensed to do commercial marijuana activities. We don't do any marijuana activities.
Right, you're just the creative office space to do these things in other areas, like Adam Palm Springs, or Ranch Mirage, wherever that area out there.
Yeah, so we will issue trademark licenses essentially. We design packages.
Right.
With our marks on them.
Your coming before this commission is not about you and your business, it's about the bigger picture in El Segundo or in the South Bay area to allow, to eliminate storage facility. As part of what it is that we're looking at today, it's not about your business.
Well, I would, that definition is so broad, I would be concerned that just about any business could be caught sideways in that. And this exact conversation we're having of, what do we do, what's marijuana, how do we fit into that? I think that would color a conversation of, do we have any of these things that are in that definition? So I'd be concerned for our business and other businesses in the city.
If storage facility were a part of, as we read it, you'd be concerned with your business if you're just creative office space? That you would have an issue with how it relates to the way this is written?
Yes.
Because if you are just branding, marketing, you place phone calls, you have creative artists and graphic designers and real estate gurus, and you're out, and you're beyond doing any business in El Segundo or any, what would be, what is the drawback? I guess I'm just, I can't seem to connect the dots, I'm just trying to.
Packaging, cardboard boxes.
Okay, so cardboard boxes and packaging is like t-shirts?
No, cardboard packaging into which marijuana products may be placed.
That you would actually have the storage and would like to have stored there?
We designed the cardboard boxes, and when we say boxes, we're not talking about large boxes, we're talking about.
Marketing, product box, retail.
Yeah, yeah, product packaging that would go on the shelf.
Okay, so you actually need to store the material, okay.
Do they contain marijuana?
They do not.
So it's just the empty packaging?
Oh, they don't contain marijuana, so you're not packaging it there.
He's just making the box.
You're just making the box.
But it's broad enough to where the box itself can be termed an accessory, because it's used in the sale. So if we.
Yeah, but that's like, that's.
Well, he has a good point though, because the way, it is about the broadest definition I've ever seen, and it really could cover everything.
Well, we could change.
It's a fairly easy fix, but you've indicated that there are two things you'd like to fix. One would be the, I forget, is it CBD or CDB, whatever? And the other is this overly broad definition. Well, it's not necessarily overly broad. The city has the discretion to prohibit businesses that are associated with cannabis uses, if it wants to. If the commission doesn't like this definition, you can direct staff to make the change. But if you don't want businesses that are associated with cannabis uses, we could do that too. So you tell us.
To any extent, we could make that decision.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a land use issue.
If you think it's overly broad.
And I've got lots of questions about research, and I don't know that it's the appropriate time to bring it up while we's at public testimony, but does research and development also fall under this category?
No, because research and development is just people on computers. This is talking about physical products that are associated with the sale, planting, cultivation, harvesting of marijuana. So if a store is not associated with cannabis and has soil on its facility, it would not trigger this definition, because it's not associated with a cannabis business.
What about a?
It would be like somebody making anything, like pipes or anything that would be related for the industry. Even though there's no marijuana, that they're not doing it at all, even though they're just making it, then we have that discretion to say that it's allowable use or not.
Right. But if you were making, I don't know, a special pot that you could grow marijuana in, but you're not growing marijuana, this would prohibit you from making that pot.
Would that be like a pot pot? Would that be like a pot pot?
A pot pot, thank you. Thanks, Jay.
So what, I'll wait for these guys.
Well, anything could be used and that's, I think, what Mr. King is saying, I mean...
Well, what about, what about research where you actually, let's say Dr. Patrick Sun Chung decided in his cancer research that cannabis is going to be an important component to how they treat patients. Can they have, can they do research with cannabis in their facility?
Not with this ordinance.
And is that an oversight?
No, that wasn't an oversight, the intent of that was that if we wanted to go down that route, that a code amendment could be done in the future. But it wasn't, it wasn't an oversight, it was intentional.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an industry in its infancy and we're learning uses of marijuana that we've never thought, there's a huge difference between, you know, smoking a joint under the bleachers at high school and CBD treatment for animals or PTSD treatment for veterans and, you know, there's, we're learning all these new uses and I just wonder as we become this creative incubator, this idea where ideas take off, are we limiting any companies that have no intention of selling marijuana or, you know, it's not a vape shop, but they're actually learning about marijuana uses that could be incredibly useful to society that we don't even know about yet?
I think the fact that, in answer to your question, Commissioner Herschler, because cannabis would be stored on the facility, I think that would be problematic under this ordinance. We're here to solicit public testimony to hear what the commission's thoughts are. So you tell us if this is a concern. I'm just not willing to concede that that definition is overly broad because this ordinance is basically consistent with the direction the staff was given a year ago by the city council. The council wanted to prohibit flat out anything that's even, you know, has any facility or any connection to cannabis. But if the commission is concerned about that and wants to, you know, have staff look at definitions, we'll do that. You tell us, you tell us what direction you want from us.
Well, I think there is consensus on this dais that we're all in agreement, we don't want the sale of marijuana in town. We don't want people growing marijuana, we don't want to walk around and smell marijuana. There are other aspects such as CBD and marketing and branding and, I don't know, banking and other things, which at least I don't think should be wrapped in with that side of it. There could be industries we don't even know about yet. So I'm not sure unless you want me to go through and tell you specifically which words, but I think we've given kind of a direction on, and I don't know if you just specifically say, you know, the sale of marijuana versus, well, then you say research and we get in the idea of they're storing marijuana in your research facility.
If I may, the reason why it was not an oversight about the research was because there are unnecessary considerations for security that research and development would entail and we could write that in, but we just haven't had the experience or the examples out there to do that at this time. So it was expedient to just include that in the mix.
Let me ask you this, if a pharmaceutical company wanted to come into El Segundo and manufacture opioids, did they do that under our current code right now?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, there would be huge, I would say that every bit as much security issues and all the concerns that we...
The difference there though is on the federal regulation side. The pharmaceutical companies and that can be approved to manufacture opioids because they're not handled the same way.
And I would even challenge if that's a good idea or not, but I mean, it's got its own set of baggage.
I don't mean to say that it's not something that we couldn't manage, we could, but it would take time and it would take some thought.
Yeah, I don't think the city needs to spend its time determining what the proper security and safety regulations are for marijuana storage, but could we design some type of application process where if someone has a valid scientific research where they need to store cannabis, then it's on them to come to us with their design for security, safety, so that the staff isn't trying to figure out how someone else is running their business, let the person who wants to run the business tell us how to do it and then we can say yes or no.
Yes, perhaps, but actually that would have been handled on the police side of the plan check process. The issues of security and that are handled through the police plan checker. So I don't really know if they have those protocol in place now. So it's, rather than make this unnecessarily complicated, we just went with a simple approach, we'll continue the ban that we already have, understanding that if legitimate and, you know, desirable changes are sought in the future, that we can amend it again, it's never permanent.
Right.
And I tend to agree, I don't see if we eliminated cannabis storage facility. Two sentences down, it says "commercial cannabis activity" which includes packaging, labeling, transportation, delivery, anything that's at all related. So I mean, there would be a lot of rewriting of this if we would then need to, or it feels very black and white until we're at that point where we need to cross that bridge and figure it out, I think.
Well, yeah, I think that there's different ways to approach it. You could, you could limit, for example, the cannabis accessories, you could say equipment products or materials that are predominantly used for cannabis, which would not sweep in incidental here and there. But that wouldn't necessarily help Tyson Ranch because their whole business model is based on cannabis. So it's really a question and, you know, it's good that the comment, the public speaker was here because, you know, it raises an interesting question, what is El Segundo want? Do you want businesses that are associated with cannabis without any cannabis being at the facility, or do you want to just have a flat ban? The other thing is that from an enforcement perspective, once you sort of open up, you know, possible connections to cannabis, then it could potentially open the door, you know, where it might make it difficult for the city to, you know, determine whether someone's incidentally using it for cannabis purposes predominantly, or, you know, if we make the cannabis accessories definition too limited, it might not, you know, trigger something that we would want it to trigger. But it's definitely a worthwhile conversation to have.
What if the definition of cannabis storage facility, which reads "a facility used for the storage of cannabis, cannabis products or cannabis accessories," we just remove cannabis accessories? So now you're talking about cannabis and cannabis products, but now I gotta read accessories because...
But if you're trying to help this nice gentleman in front of you, Ryan, then just go to down and look at what it says, packaging. So, I mean, you're...
Yeah, but that, but I believe that packaging would only be if, I would interpret that to mean packaging the actual cannabis at the facility and we can make that clear as well. Yeah, that would be a possibility to strike cannabis accessories.
Because the intent is, we don't want you having physical cannabis in your shop, whether you're packaging it or doing whatever, but if there's no physical cannabis and you're just online making a webpage and you specialize in the cannabis industry, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
So one, one way to approach this would be in the definition of a cannabis product, I don't remember the exact title, it excludes hemp, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We could include language that says excluding hemp and other derivatives that are basically legal, you know, and that would, that would cover the CBD stuff and certain, I don't know what other products are made from this plant. We can find language that addresses it that way, that way we don't have to be so specific and that way also if at some point in the future this, this chemical is found to also be harmful and then it is then made illegal, we don't have to amend our code, it's already, it would just go away.
May I make a comment on how to address this issue? I think, I believe that the activities that are offensive to the community and that you're trying to regulate are contained in the definition of "commercial cannabis activity" and cannabis-related activity. And that's, that's why I share in the observation that I believe also including cannabis storage facility is unnecessary to achieve what I've heard to be the articulated goal of keeping cultivation operations, manufacturing operations, distribution operations, and retail sale operations out of the city limits. I believe all of those are contained in the definitions of either cannabis, commercial cannabis activity or cannabis-related activity.
Or you just write in "storage of cannabis, cannabis products" in either one of those definitions?
I, under the state law, you, only a licensed operator can store cannabis, you need a license under the MACURSA to do that.
So what we're talking about as a city is, do we actually want to allow anything to do with the marijuana-related industry to do any sort of business whatsoever in our community? And that's what's being asked tonight.
Yeah.
Right. So, that is, you know, you're, it's been made legal, it is illegal on the local level, you know, from an older generation here on the dais, I can say that it is a, you know, opening Pandora's box, once you let a little bit and it starts to happen, then these tremendous changes happen, very quickly they happen. I'm not particularly in favor of anything cannabis, marijuana-related in the community, that's me, that's my generation. I'm all in favor of business however, and I completely understand your perspective and what you do, but I'm just not in favor of businesses in this community continuing to support that directive, and that's just me where I sit.
So Brenda, you're saying you don't want to make any changes to what's before us?
I don't see the changes happening where we eliminate cannabis accessories or some of the commercial cannabis activities. I wouldn't be particularly in favor of it right now, that's...
No, I don't think anyone's proposing we allow that, we're just saying, should we allow the making of just the cardboard box that is used to package somewhere else?
I understand that, that's exactly what I was trying to get at, that, you know, I don't care if it's a cardboard box or I don't care if it's the papers that you roll it in or the pipes you smoke it in, or, I'm just not in favor of continuing to support that industry and so I'm not in favor of it, no.
Okay.
You would take that thing, go further?
I would keep it as it is until the need would be that we're really, instead of being all trying to figure it out and let's just go ahead and make it happen, I'm going to be far more conservative and wait until we really can see the need for it. There's, the gentleman before us is one business and I just don't, I just think that as you open that up and we become a place where it's okay, you know, it's okay to have that business or any business, marijuana, cannabis-related business, then this could be the place people would go to. I just think the more that we, the longer we hold out and remain conservative, then I think that, I just think that that's my take on it. It's, I have a hard time articulating exactly how I feel about it, but that's how I feel about it.
Fair enough. And would you, if approved as is, does this legitimately next week affect your business operations if that definition isn't changed at all?
We'd be able to make changes.
But you would go in and have to do some things differently?
I would probably have to implement changes where we didn't have any material amounts of prefabricated packaging onsite.
And from a staff level, what is the, I mean, I know we're not in the business of knocking door to door and seeing what products people have on their shelves, so what is a consequence of this?
The, basically it would be a code enforcement action that would be triggered by complaints probably, so if anyone informed us of a violation either by, you know, the packaging is probably not very likely, but if they did, we would be forced to enforce it. But if somebody informed us that a business in town was selling smoothies with CDB or CBD or whatever it is, we would, we would make them stop and all of that, yeah. But it would probably not be a proactive approach unless it was flagrant.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I don't know if CBD or CDB comes from hemp or comes from...
In over my skis on the definitions.
What's that?
In over my skis on the definition.
Yeah.
In over my skis, it powders deep.
Mr. Chair, just two items, the public hearing is still open and then also, I don't know if the commission wants to address Commissioner Herschler's comments about research and development that might have cannabis onsite.
Yeah. Well, what do you think, Jay, research and development? I mean, great concern talking about Dr. Suni and his research and cancer and all that, but I can't see how staff comes up with regulations that would allow that to happen. The problem is if someone comes to the counter and says, hey, can I do this great research thing, they'll be told no.
Yeah.
Right, they won't be like, well, here's how I can do it.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that, you know, I'm concerned about missing out on great thought incubators that might, you know, Smokey Hollow is on its way here and it's going to attract a lot of interesting businesses. I'm very interested in what happens with the biotech and, you know, there could be tremendous medical uses that we don't even know about yet. And whether or not that business is coming down El Segundo, I don't know, but I just, I just, I hate to eliminate that, that aspect of it before it even shows up. And I, and I think there might be a way, you know, I don't want a pot shop on Main Street, you know, I just think that they're so different, it's such a different use that I think you could draw a line between those things.
No, it's land use, we could say if you're going to do that, it's going to be on the industrial side of town, it's going to be away from any schools or whatever it is, but again, that's staff kind of creating on a whole cloth, you know, if it's opioids and they just kind of defer to the federal regulations, follow that and you're okay. There are no federal regulations for this.
Can you add it as a conditional use permit or something that would trigger, in order to do that, you still have to come before planning commissions for approval?
Yeah, or city council or...
Or it's not allowed by right either?
Right.
Well, I think if Dr. Patrick Sun Chung opted to see that there was a need and he could then certainly come before the city and then that would be triggered either to come before planning commissioner, city council, because then they would have, they would have a great idea and then they would, they would be able to present it and it would be its time.
Yeah, and he's an exception, but you know, how many, if there was a blanket statement that said there's no marijuana business usage anywhere in the South Bay, you know, we've already listed 14 cities that don't do it anywhere, I think that business doesn't even consider coming to town.
Well, maybe they would.
Well, probably not.
Maybe they would.
I mean, if this were a dry county or a dry city, the brew pub wouldn't knock on her door and say, hey, you know what, we think, we think we can do this and it'll be fine, don't worry, you know, they just wouldn't even consider it. So I just feel like it's, it's just an aspect of the new industry that we don't understand yet and I just hate to shut it down before we know all those pieces to it.
I agree, I hear what you're saying, but I think we also don't know enough about it yet, so I just think that we're, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, but maybe, I guess, I guess I have the same logic of why say no if we don't know all the, all the answers yet. You know, I'm not saying yes, absolutely, let's have all marijuana usage in town, I mean, it's just a tiny little sliver of that. And I don't know how valuable marijuana research is, I don't know how vast it is, you know, I just, I just watched the most recent 60 Minutes on opioid use and it's just, it's heartbreaking. I mean, it's something that no one ever expected, you know, and now you've got Americans all over this country that you wouldn't think is drug users and they're hooked on opioids. And, and now you've got Americans all over this country that, uh, you wouldn't think as drug users, and they're, they're hooked on opioids. And, and one of the things they mentioned was marijuana use is actually getting people off of opioids. And so, I mean, that, that's just an interesting angle to that. So I, I'm not saying, "Give these people marijuana", I'm saying, "Let's research it and find out." And so, as, as it relates to land use, if that, a company like that came in and said, "Hey, we wanna, we wanna study this more", we'd say, "Oh, sorry, you can't do that here." I think that'd be kinda tragic.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't research it without having the marijuana.
Probably not.
But then to Brenda's point, once you allow that, now you're allowing all these other uses.
Well, I, I mean, I think research is research.
Yeah. Well, if there's any more questions for Mr. Calhoun, if not, I'll can close public communication. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you for coming.
Close public communication. Um, so let's see if we can give any direction to staff, or at least some type of consensus. I think there is a consensus that we all agree, uh, to prohibit the sale and growth and production of the actual marijuana plant. Uh, there is, um... Concern about that being broad, too broad, to include, uh, CBD or CBD whatever, which may or may not come from hemp, I don't know. Um, but if people are, you know, our moms are getting in their smoothies, I can't imagine it being anything... I'll just leave it at that. Um, and then the research aspect is the one that I'm really trying to wrap my head around. How do we say, "You can't do this"? Because I, I think you're right, Jay. I think once, once the staff gets this, and someone comes in and says, "Hey, I wanna open a research facility, and here's what I'm doing", they'll be told, "No", not, "Oh, well, you have to go and change the law". They would just go somewhere else. So that, that one's a tough one. You know, uh, I kinda like Michelle's idea of a CUP or some type of permit process.
How is that currently, if you have a, an industrial user?
Yeah, this is-
We don't regulate what they're creating, right?
Right, because we, we, the land use is, is research and development. What they're researching or what they're developing is not any of our business, usually.
Right.
Um, it becomes our business with, with a broad prohibition like this. Um, and as far as I know, this might be the only one that we have, if we have this. I mean, we have it already, so we have, um... Again, it would probably result very much like the smoothie shop I was mentioning. If we got wind of it after it was done, we, it, we approved it as R and D, and then we find out, but they're R and D-ing marijuana, then we'd have to shut it down. So, and that would be complaint-driven, I imagine. I can't, I can't see any scenario where we would be proactively asking, "What are you researching?"
Right.
Right? Um, but it would be, it would, it would be incumbent upon us to shut it down when we find out about it. Even in the middle of, of research, yeah. So... I do understand the point, though, that you think people would tend to just move on. But if, we have plenty of pharmaceutical companies here, and if any of them were interested, we would not just say, "No, go away", I mean, we wouldn't. We would say, insta- instigate a code amendment that we will take to the planning commission and the city council. We're pretty quick about these things here now.
Right.
So it's possible that you can give us direction to study this issue, but to bring back the other issues in a, in an amendment, and then we can do further research on, on research and development. It's, it's likely that there's not even a possibility of doing it, given the federal laws that we have. And if that's the case, well, then it's not an issue that we have to deal with immediately. So my recommendation, for what it's worth, would be to give us clear direction on what to do about the language of the, of the amendment, or the, the ordinance that we put before you, and, and then if desired, give us direction to go off and study the, the research and development aspects of it, and come back at a later date with that, because it, we don't have anybody knocking on our door for that right now, so it's not-
Right. Yeah, I think he, he raises a good point about the staff's responsiveness overall. I mean, I, since I've been up here, I think every code change, or even Smoky Hollow, has been driven by the developers or the land users who are telling city, "You, you need to do this, and this is why." So it, we may be fine. I, I think we've been clear on what the intent is. Uh, I, I think staff understands, you know, the, the negative connotations we're trying to stop, uh, from coming into our community. Uh, and I think if we just kind of were more specific, um, about that in the language, and I know it's a vague statement for me to make, to tell you to be more specific on something that's overly broad, that would kinda lessen my concern, because I, I think Greg does make a good point. If there really was, especially Dr. Sunyi, you know, that guy can do whatever he wants in this town. Um, if there was a pharmaceutical company, Kite Pharma, someone like that, "Hey, I'm an incubator, here's what I wanna do", um, it has been my experience with staff where they try to figure out how to do it.
I think that's a good point. I think that if we actually tied your hands to ask you to be more specific, then it becomes more, it becomes more difficult for a, a company, should they want to approach the city for you to change. So I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the way these things are written here, and, uh, making that recommendation to city council, that we have a blanket no with anything that's related at this time, now. I'm, I'm personally comfortable with that. I don't know how the rest of you all feel, I know how you feel, Jay. But I think that if we asks, if we ask staff to continue down that path of hypotheticals, when this is broad enough that, and approachable enough for a young business or a new business to come up to planning department, and the, as you say, these guys are very approachable and, um, will listen, and if it makes sense, then they can, then they can develop a research and development.
Yeah, I, I have no doubt, they're a pleasure to work with. And, and, you know, they're, they're timely and they work quick, and, and you guys are open-minded about stuff. I just feel like if you categorically say no, most people are gonna say, "You know what? El Segundo's not interested, that's just not a place we're gonna look." And it, I, it's the exception when somebody says, "No, no, no, I think we can do it", you know? They, and, and it's up, it's, the onus is on the applicant then, to see if they can make it work. I just feel like we're shutting out the applicant.
And the onus should be on the applicant in, in a lot of respects. I mean, why, why is that a bad thing? If I've got a super clean business, and I have a, I'm committed to El Segundo, and I've got a parcel of property in, in a, in a developing area, why wouldn't I then wanna bring that before the council? Or, or think that that would be something that could be potential, because I am showing you that this is, these are my thoughts, this is what I'd like to do, and, uh, this is the place where I wanna do it.
Yeah, it, it's just, we're saying no in, in the, not the hopes, but the, uh, the possibility that somebody can find a way that they'll say yes.
Exactly right. We're gonna say a blanket no and hope that someone figures out the yes for us.
And I just think that's unreasonable.
Can we not add some exception language? So with the exception of research and development, at which time the applicant has to-
You'll get what happened in Smoky Hollow, where every creative office was just a research and development office.
Absolutely.
You know, they're gonna say it's research and development, but they're just selling weed, you know what I mean?
But for the use of cannabis, you still have to, there's another approval process. So with the exception of research and development, at which time that application needs to come before planning commission?
I just think you're gonna open a can of worms, and then, then that's gonna be-
And I'm, I'm gonna agree with Brenda, because I've seen it with parking, you know? Someone comes in and says, "I only need four parking spots, because this is gonna be used for research and development, and all this is storage, and all this is warehouse", and then you drive by and there's a bunch of cubicles in there. You know, staff doesn't have the time, or the staff to go through and make sure. They say, "Oh, we get a building permit, we'll know what they're doing", but you really don't know. So I think Brenda raises, raises a good concern about if, if, you know, the, the best intent in the world, but if you, you allow people an avenue to come in and, and use the process to get a permit, there really is no way for the city to make sure that permit is being complied with, unless it's complaint-driven.
Yeah, but I mean, it, wouldn't it be... If you just say blanket research and development across any industry, and we're not investigating what that is, I totally get how that gets misused. If it's, um, if it's a brewery or a distillery, and you say, "You know what? We're gonna let you guys brew beer or, uh, bottle whiskey, but you can't sell it here, you can't have a taproom". I mean, that seems like a fairly easy thing to, to monitor. And so, maybe that's a bad example, but, um, I would think that if, if someone was applying for a, uh, for a permit to do some sort of cannabis research, wouldn't that trigger maybe a few more questions? You know, "What does that mean? What are you doing here?", is, and, and, and is that an inappropriate, uh, request? If somebody wants to do something cannabis-related? Or is it none of our business, and you don't wanna ask them, what, what is that research?
I think the city has a right to say that we don't want anyone running a business based upon the fact that you have to have a license to either sell or grow, or, or do anything with cannabis. My concern was, what about all the other industries that service that industry, that aren't licensed and aren't doing anything with cannabis, land use, banking, whatever it is? I wanna make sure that we're not casting such a wide net that we're inhibiting that. But when you get into research, now you're dealing with people who have the license and, and have the plant, and they're, and they're, they have it onsite. And I think that's hard, that's gonna be hard to enforce.
Well, my hope is, is that that same, that same company is not opening up their back door and selling it in, in the, uh-
Right, right.
In the alley, you know?
Sure.
I would like to think that it's a legitimate, uh, 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 what, an actual scientific use, and not for sales, not retail, not, uh, so...
Um, if I can interject a little bit here.
Sure.
Um, currently, as far as we know, there is no medical research of R and D, of involving marijuana occurring in the United States, because, one, most medical research is federally funded through NIH and so forth, and, or at least partially, and it would be prohibited. And, um, you know, it, it's still not even in the state law, one of the identified uses. The only, the closest thing they have is testing, which is really more of a question of testing for potency, and probably for contaminants and so forth. So it's not something that we really do need to deal with urgently at the moment. It will come up eventually, but I think we have time.
Yeah, I, I'm just afraid to say blanket no on everything. That's, I, that's my position, and there's four of us here, and, you know.
I got you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I'm gonna try to bring this to a close and make a motion. Uh, I will move to approve... Forgot what it's called, uh...
Resolution, right here?
Do you have it? Okay, uh, resolution number two eight five one recommending that the city council approve environmental assessment number EA eleven ninety-nine and zone text and num- amendment number seventeen oh seven, uh, with the following modifications, which is, um, to remu- remove cannabis accessories from the definition of cannabis storage facility, and then further classify and define the difference between cannabis, um, and CBD or hemp. So that if it's not clear on this, it should state that if you're using CBD, which it is, would be considered industrial hemp versus cannabis. And those would be the two recommendations, so I'm not gonna address your recommendation, um, just 'cause I think it's a Pandora's box. But I, I, it's a great point, something I didn't think about. So those would be two, my two modifications, and we don't have to vote on it now, we can talk about it, but that's-
You want to remove cannabis accessories?
Just the words cannabis accessories. So you can't store the plant, you can't store, uh, what's the other thing? But I think if, if you just got cardboard boxes, and there's no plants or marijuana in it, I, I don't see how that would be a problem.
Does that include pipes and bongs and-
I was gonna ask that, but there's an earlier, which I think-
Well, we already prohibit-
Right, the sale of-
We prohibit, um, hold on.
Cannabis-related retail sales.
And the activity. Cannabis-related activity is any commercial cannabis activity, cultivation, delivery, uh, manufacture, um... And then cannabis, commercial cannabis activity is cultivation, possession, manufacture, distribution, possessing, dah 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 dah. That's a good point, so we can allow people to store pipes and bongs and things.
Store but not sell?
Yeah, actually, why is that any different if you had a box of glasswork bongs that have no pot in them? What's, why, why is that different than packaging?
A cardboard box, I think you're right, yeah, no, good point, good point. All right. What were you gonna say, Mr. King?
Rather than, um, just an idea, rather than making the changes from the dais, you might wanna just give direction, you know, tell, tell the staff your consensus, and then we can maybe pre- bring something back.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And they're good at drafting on the fly.
Legal.
Okay, so withdraw my motion, and then let me see if we have a consensus on, um, making the definition of what cannabis is to exclude, uh, CBD or CBD, I'm not sure what it's called.
CBD.
CBD.
And industrial hemp.
Industrial hemp's already in there. I think there's just a little, I, I don't know what CBD is or where it comes from, I think, so, um, I guess that would be really the only change.
And then we will leave the accessories?
Uh, I think so. Yeah, I think so, because it would cover all the other stuff.
But again, going back to our earlier conversation about, the intent is not to impact current business operations?
Correct. It's to stop the sale of, or production or manufacture or growth of the actual marijuana.
So to the point earlier, I'm not gonna pretend to know what the legal language would be, but I would be in favor of something with the intent of not disrupting current business that has nothing to do with the, the storage or sale of true cannabis, so packaging. I'm not interested in Tyson Holistic having to clear out cabinets tomorrow because they have packaging material.
Yeah, if I can, if I can interject, I think what, it sounds like at least there might be a consensus of the planning commission to allow, um, packaging materials, you know, as an example, but not allow other accessories that are more commonly associated with cannabis, such as-
Right, pipes or bongs or whatever.
Right, so maybe it's a matter-
If you're marketing and making webpages or flyers-
Packaging, I mean, if you're gonna allow packaging, then you should allow bongs. So it's either, uh, it's either an all or, all or nothing from-
It is a slippery slope, because it raises the question about vaping pipes.
Exactly.
Oh, do we have to define that in here, too?
No, but it's, it is mentioned, um, in one of the definitions.
Yeah, cannabis accessories includes vaporizing.
Right.
Packages are designed for vaporizing, essentially. Um, I mean, I think we could probably... We can, I mean, staff can, you know, take the commission's direction, as long as there's a consensus, and we could try and include certain things in the definition of cannabis accessories and not include other things. And we can try and, you know, we'll roll up our sleeves and try and make it work. But you just, you tell us what you want us to do, and, and as long as there's a consensus, we're, we're good.
Okay, I think I agree with Michelle. I think Brenda's made her position known. Where do you stand?
I'm, I'm fine with that language, you know? It's, uh, I'm sort of, um, I, I wish I had a, a better example or a, um, solution for the research thing, you know? It's, I, I think, I, I feel like we're in, we're coming out of prohibition, and, you know, we would never have let a, uh, craft beer company here in town, you know, at that time. I realize many decades have passed since prohibition's gone away, but, you know, we just don't know. And so I'm just, I'm reluctant to have, say a blanket no on, on all this, but I'm fine with that language changing.
As, as far as like the CBD?
Correct, yes.
And then we can, the packaging, we can have them come back with?
Yeah.
And then we can talk about it again, Brenda? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly willing to see the way, the way it's written, but I'm not unhappy the way it is now.
Okay. So I think we have a consensus and some vague direction for staff. I, I wanna thank you for the work you've already done. Um, this is new territory, first of all. I wanna thank Mr. Calhoun for coming and giving us some education about what it is you folks do. Um, any other, do we need to, yes, sir?
Do you wanna close the public hearing? I'm not sure you did that.
I already did that earlier.
Oh, you did, okay, sorry.
I'll close it again.
I withdraw that? Extra close. We're all high, we don't know.
Well, I'm sorry, um, we'll close. Oh, yeah, we'll continue the meeting, that's a great point. So I guess I'll take a motion to continue this, uh, and ask staff to come back with their thoughts. So I guess I'll take a motion to continue this, uh, ask staff to come back with their thoughts on the direction we gave them for our next meeting. So a motion to continue October eleventh? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Four zero. All right, thank you. That brings us to the next two items and I do believe we're asked to continue these, correct?
Yes, on both of the next two items, we're, we're requesting um, continuance. We, we do keep an aggressive schedule and then sometimes near the end, we think it'd be nice to get just a little bit more time, and that's what's happened in both of these cases. Things have come up, we wanna address a few things. And um, for the short term rentals, we're going to request a continuance to October eleventh. Uh, we may ask for another continuance after that. Anyone who's, who's watching this, please stay in touch with the planning department on the schedule because we do want participation when we have this, this hearing, but things need to be resolved before we move this one forward. And then on the wireless one, uh, we're gonna ask for a continuance to a date uncertain and we will just renotice that one when it comes up.
Okay, I did talk to several folks outside who were here on the ADU matter.
And short term rentals, you mean?
Short term rental, yeah. You see where my head's at? So I did let them know, or I encouraged them to come back, uh, so we can get the stakeholder input, so. So with that, I'll take a motion to continue agenda item three, zone text amendment to allow and regulate short term rentals in the city residential zone until October eleventh.
A move?
Okay, a motion, we have a second?
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, four zero. And then I'll just go ahead and make the motion to continue item four regarding wireless communication facility regulations to a planning commission date to be determined. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, it brings us to continued business none. Now report from planning and building safety director designee.
There is nothing to report this time.
Oh, thank you for that. Uh, planning commissioner comments?
Hmm, nothing for me today?
Uh, I just wanna say I enjoyed our little debate up here. That was quite the exchange. I was like in the middle of it for a while. Exciting. Um, all right, with that, we come to adjournments. And next meeting will be October eleventh at five thirty in these chambers. Thank you.